Wise to just address the issues brought up by the objector, Givadon, regarding the validity of the application and the access.
Before you do that, Counselor, can we address the disqualification issue?
Please step to the mic, state your name to the record.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
My name is Christopher Hanlon. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hanlon, David Wright. I'm here tonight representing William Bobsting and some other individual property owners.
So you're going to need a list of every person represented.
All right, I'll supply that. Objectors.
Yeah.
And the reason why I want to talk before Counsel addresses anything substantive, including the notice issue, is we believe that you should disqualify yourself, Mr. Salamini.
Oh, really?
Of the fact that in the past you've accepted political contributions from the developer.
Yes, I did. You bought four tickets to a fundraiser three years ago. And for that, you got a nice evening out, good food, good drink, and good music.
Thanks.
Along with about three or four hundred other residents. So I think you're stretching it.
It still counts.
All right, and while I understand that in the course of one's political life that happens, my wife was actually the mayor of my town, so I actually saw that happen.
Your objections noted. I'm not stepping down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I just make the record, please?
Absolutely.
The local government ethics law, which is NJSA 48:922.5, specifically addresses political contributions being accepted by any local government representative. That would include yourself. And if nothing else, it creates the specter that there's an impropriety here which we think you should not take the chance to obtain these proceedings. We think the law supports the proposition that you should disqualify yourself.
Yes, the judge is going to have to determine that.
And that may happen, but I'm in abundance of caution, rabies, even for the benefit of the applicant, that you not even take this entire proceeding, which is probably going to be a substantial one, with that claim.
Do you believe that you can objectively listen to the testimony and evidence presented in this matter? Absolutely.
Who objectively in the matter?
Absolutely.
Do you feel that accepting, well, not even accepting, having a contribution made to your campaign fund when you were running for councilman would impact your ability to make a decision in this matter?
Absolutely not.
Are you going to step down?
Absolutely not.
All right, thank you for letting me.
Thank you, appreciate that. Now, let's get to the objector from Givadon. And I guess that would be Nancy Lottinville. That would be you. Let's step forward, and what I'd like to do is address the objections made, and here, testimony, if you will, as to why this should or should not proceed. And I'll let you start, and then we'll have Counsel for the applicant address your concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Nancy Lottinville, L-O-T-T-I-N-V-I-L-L-E. I'm an attorney and director at Givens, D.C., and we represent Givadon, Givadon Corporation. I'm here this evening in objection to the application, and I have outlined in a fair amount of detail the issues that I have with respect to the notice given by this application, which, of course, as you know, refers jurisdiction on the board, and if insufficient, applies to board of jurisdiction. I stand by the entirety of the letter, which is rather lengthy, but I thought that I would go right to a major point, and that would be the points raised. Towards the end, Givadon is not an applicant or a co-applicant in this matter. Givadon has not consented to the application. The access being relied on, however, by the applicant is owned by Givadon, i.e. Mary Road. Mary, I'm sorry, Mary Lane. Mary Lane is, the access that the applicant is entitled to on Mary Lane is set forth in a very specific access easement agreement, a contract, and that was attached to the letter that I sent to you, dated June 27th. It is extremely specific that it is limited to residential lots, which are, of course, conforming lots. It's very specific that there are houses on the property. It's very specific with respect to where the driveways are located and how wide they might be, and that runs in perpetuity. It is also very specific that any change to the contractual rights that the applicant claims for access to River Road is controlled by Givadon and must, to which they must consent and must be advised. We have not been, Givadon has not been consulted, Givadon has not been requested to make any change to this access easement. I will point out, as a point of historical fact, that an access easement existed prior to the current, one dated June 26, 2007, which is attached to the letter, for one residential lot. And we did, in 2007, top the subdivision of the property to three residential lots, meant needing easement to provide for the driveway access as was granted by the board in a conforming new situation. We have, I think I can somewhat short-circuit this entire process by telling you, the Givadon has advised me to tell you that it, under no circumstance, will alter the access easement.
Okay.
The letter dated June 27th, from me to the chairman, as objectors one, and that would be Givadon.
O-G1?
Fine.
Yeah, that's about the best we can do. And that's in the letter, right?
Yes.
It's total of eleven pages.
There may be some seats. If there's any seats available, could everybody, please, kind of move to the center? We have some folks in the back that would like to sit down.
The letter is, it's four pages. The access agreement is attached there, too, and that is, the letter is four pages, the access agreement is five pages, and the two copies of the notices.
So basically, what you're saying is that the applicant does not have access based upon the agreement to do or to construct what he's proposing to construct? That your access agreement limits it to three curb cuts and residential home zones?
That is correct.
Does that kind of sums it up?
Conforming lot.
I feel like I'm, I feel like I'm medium, but if you can hold your applause to the end, these proceedings will go a lot smoother. And also, there's so many people here recording, and we have a court stenographer, and she may miss something important. So I appreciate your excitement and your concern, but if we can kind of limit it a little bit so that we can proceed in somewhat of a professional manner. Thank you. Yes, so did I sum it up correctly?
You summed it up correctly, insofar as the applicant is seeking a D1 use variance. The applicant has no rights, under the access easement, to develop or operate the property in an industrial, commercial fashion, because it would be far in excess of the terms and conditions of the access.
So Givadon would rather see three homes there?
Right.
Okay. Counselor?
In response to, in response to what was just advised by Givadon, I would like to make as a point of correction for the record that Givadon was approached by my client, specifically through my office, when this application was proceeding forward back on May 12 of 2015. We did send a certified letter, which is part of the public record, on this document, sorry, on this document, as well as we provided proofs of notices to Givadon at both their easement over location, as well as their Department of Law, Deed, and Easement office that is based out of their Ohio address. And in fact, I had multiple conversations with legal counsel, with Givadon through their corporate law division, and Jane Barfinkel, regarding this application, and certain things that Givadon would be looking into as far as whether or not they would agree, whether or not an amendment or a new access agreement was necessary. This letter that was provided through Givens counsel came as quite a shock to my client, who received it on June 27th. But I don't want to get into a legal debate, which is outside of the jurisdiction of this board, as to whether or not the 2007 access agreement, the predecessor access agreement, or the fact that my client's property is landlocked, and the only residential use on the private road, which is occupied by nothing but industrial and warehouse use, including Givadon, Andral, White Sog, and the Doreen Industrial Park, because that might be an issue that unfortunately, if Givadon is firm and is never positioned, and I've learned in my 20-plus years of practice, that never's really a word I never use, because clients' expectations and what people agree to change quite frequently, then I would say that that might be an issue that unfortunately may or may not have to be litigated. But when we were first dealing with Givadon counsel in 2015, it was very clear to us and our understanding that Givadon didn't really see the point in moving too much further into discussions until they knew whether or not the board would even approve such a use. Because if the board never even approved such a use, there's no need to have a discussion. It would be completely hypothetical, and it would be unknown. And it's not uncommon for a board, such as this board has set as precedent, which John Maravella's case for Dona Gymnastics, Papermark, both of those are on the private road, known as Murray Lane, or, excuse me, Murray Road, I'm now saying Lane, you know, that this matter was deemed complete, which it was, by your engineering department on June 1st. In their letter of June 1st, they indicate that this would have to be a condition of approval, that the applicant would have to show that we're able to provide that access. Now that burden's on us. Whether that means we have to litigate, whether that means we resolve whatever issues Givadon has or concerns they have with this, maybe the fact that they've only indicated, when I spoke to counsel earlier today, that they've only really had since yesterday to prepare for this, maybe they're not even fully up to speed on what the project is. But the issue, as my letter indicates, is this board has to proceed and move forward. We were deemed to certify complete. There is a timing limitation now on when this matter needs to be heard, and we can't go back now and say the matter is not complete because of an easement owner where there's no changes or work provided in the easement area has a potential objection. We deal with objections and objectors every single day on multiple applications. And our position would be that it's probably in the best interest of Givadon. I mean, this application has a lot of what ifs. There's no guarantee how far this matter will get tonight. There's no guarantee that the board will even vote favorably for the application. But if we start moving forward, and the board hears what's proposed, and maybe if the objectors hear and Givadon hears, maybe some of those concerns and issues will be alleviated, and maybe not. But again, it's the applicant's burden. They've obviously spent a lot of time, energy, moving this application forward. They have all their professionals here tonight, and I think at a minimum, the board would say, look, applicant is on you. If we move forward and you can't get the access, then you've spent a lot of money. But that's for our burden.
Let's play the devil's advocate here for a minute. We go through this entire process, we bring all these good people out for hours, their own time. They bring professionals. We have our professionals. We go through the whole thing hypothetically, it's denied. Then we have no problem, there's no issue. The application's approved, Givadon never gives consent, then we've wasted everybody's time. That's my thought. We've wasted everybody's time, given the fact that counsel used the term "never." I'm concerned about that. I don't want to spend taxpayer dollars on our professionals. I hate to see the applicant continue to spend dollars presenting his case. We have a lot of folks here that are going to dissent. I'm sure there's been money. I know attorneys don't work for free. There is some pro bono work, but not a whole lot. My concern is that we go through the whole application. Let's say it's deemed okay, it's a good idea. Then we go to court, and you don't have access. And we've wasted an awful lot of time and awful lot of taxpayer dollars. And I don't know, I'm not, I mean, it's a decision the board's going to have to make, but I'm not inclined to. I mean, I read the, I read the letter. It's compelling. It's pretty clear what access he has. I think this matter should have been resolved long before this. I think this matter should have been resolved, you know, long before 27th of the month. I mean, the whole project depends on the applicant having access. If he doesn't have access, we're wasting time. That's a matter that I think should have been resolved. Why did the letter come so late?
The home office of the company is in Cincinnati, and the record reflects that one letter was sent, and it was sent to Cincinnati. It was received by our office on late Thursday, I think even in the evening, and we were retained on Friday, and I basically came to the municipal office to review the file at 3 o'clock on Friday afternoon, and I spent the weekend writing the letter.
So with all this work that's been done, the signs and all these postings and everything, you just found out about it last week?
That is correct. I found out about it on Friday morning. I found out.
Corporate America. If I may, Chairman, I believe I think we should carry this to the next meeting to find out whether there's an access.
I'm not going to have people screaming. We have an objector that has a valid objection. I mean, come on, folks, you've got to understand. You have to, you know, apparently you're not in favor of this. Here we have an objector who raises a pretty valid point, and we have to consider it. We have to consider it.
We can sit here until 12 o'clock tonight, and you can come back another two weeks, and we sit here until another 12 o'clock, whether the board approves or denies it, it really is not our say right now. Do you want to waste eight hours of your time or four hours of your time? We could be doing something else. We're volunteers up here. We don't get paid to do this. Professionals do. You guys came out. We can sit, we can all sit here and do our application, but if they have no access to the road, then we're hearing an application. It doesn't make sense. If you want to do it, I'll sit here and do it.
All right, let me ask my attorney what our options are, and I'd like to hear from our planner.
Mr. Chairman, before, I was not finished, if I could finish up before.
Yes.
I just want to clarify something. You know, the applicant, just so we're clear, in their escrow deposit is paying for all the town.
I understand that.
And so it's not tax money.
It's not tax money.
As far as.
We're not going to have anyone yelling from the back. If you have something to say, please step up to the microphone, state your name at the right time. Everybody will have an opportunity to be, state their case, say whether they're in favor of it or not in favor of it. Everybody will have their right to speak. If we have to have twelve meetings, that's what we'll have. But please, if screaming and yelling in the back gets nothing on the record, and we want everything on the record for this application. Counselor, proceed.
Is, what I was going to say is that it's our position, as I indicated in our letter, that is also part of the record with the board, and certainly, we can submit as part of the record, which is already a record in the public, the May 12 letter that went out last year, that counsel just received yesterday, that the applicant certainly did proceed, reached out to Givadon, and as I indicated, we had discussions with Givadon. So to find out now that their position of wanting to know what the board's position would be before the application, as far as any discussions about the access or not access, would proceed, is certainly a surprise to us. But more importantly, as I indicated before, it is not uncommon for this board to make this a condition of approval. And I think it would be beneficial, even if the board wanted to entertain the point of just maybe bifurcating the planning part of it, just for everyone to have a better understanding of what the project is. Because as Mr. Chairman and all the members that sit on this board and residents know, there's a lot of information that is being expelled on this that is misinformation. And certainly, if maybe the members who have taken the time to be here and they're professionals and so forth heard that information, it might be beneficial on whether or not this application even continues to proceed. So at a minimum, we would ask if the board has serious concerns over the access, as indicated by Givadon's counsel, that we bifurcate, put on the planning testimony, and then at that point, if the board wants us to agree and consent to be carried and have further discussions with Givadon, then my client is willing to do that. If not, then our position is, you know, we obviously don't consent to be carried, but, you know, the board will make the decision.
Counselor Littleson.
Well, Chairman, you basically summed up the scenario for the board correctly.
Please speak into the microphone, just so everybody here.
You summed up the scenario correctly for the board, meaning that the board has the option tonight to proceed, hear the application, and then determine afterwards whether or not Givadon is going to agree to amend or enter to a new agreement with the applicant with regard to access over the easement. Or, on the other hand, the board could determine that they require, they want this information prior to making any determinations on the application. I've searched for the last two days for case law or something on point in this case, and I haven't been able to find anything, nor has anyone been able to present to me anything that's exactly on point. That being said, it's more or less going to be for the board to determine whether or not they want to proceed, with the understanding that an approval is still going to be conditioned upon, and it's standard procedure for our engineer to make any approvals conditioned upon getting access through the easement. Or does the board say, before we go forward, before we spend additional time, and as you said, bringing up professionals and things of that nature, do we want to spend this time on this application only to, if the board deems acceptable and approves the application, only to find out that Givadon, as counsel said earlier, is not willing to amend their agreement? Then basically, the approval will never be able to be implemented, because there will not have any access to the property over the private road. So at this point, it's more or less up to the board to determine how they want to proceed.
Mr. Tango, do you have an opinion or a thought?
Yeah, I could.
You have to speak into the microphone, please, sir.
I could provide some additional information. I think from our capacity, as the board's technical advisor, that's all we are here for, is to provide advice. The board, obviously, has the final determination, so whether we deem the application complete or not, the fact that the Givadon's attorney here at the 11th hour with an objection, they have control over the easement. They've set the guideline, if you will, for whether this, in my opinion, this application has got any merit going forward. I think this is a different application than what Ms. Doherty indicated from some of the prior applications because of the number of objectors. The turnout here tonight is much different, especially with the representation of attorneys and professionals in some of the other applications. I think the public, obviously, is here in strength to voice their opinion. I think the board has, as the attorney, as Mr. Rush said, has the decision to make. But I think the board has to understand that whether we, if we decide to go forward with the full application, you're going to have significant testimony over a significant number of meetings. And just to outline the procedure, and I may be repetitive for the board and for the public, as we go through each individual witness that Ms. Doherty presents, each of the, the public will have an opportunity to question that individual. In addition, each of the objecting attorneys will have the right to cross-examine that individual. So this is not going to be, in my opinion, a very short application. This, in my opinion, is going to be a protracted application with a number of public hearings. And the board has to, I think, decide, and you said it earlier at the onset of the meeting, whether that effort, with a big question mark at the end, and we've heard from the applicants, I mean, excuse me, the objector's attorney is to where Givadon stands, whether that effort is worth moving forward with the possibility of expending a lot of time and effort and not having an ability for this application to move in a positive direction from the applicant's perspective.
Mrs. Green, do you have a thought on this?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to add. I concur with what Mr. Rush and Mr. Tango have said. There's no need to repeat it. It's up to the board how they want to proceed.
I would just remind the board that there are significant issues with the notice from a jurisdictional standpoint, so that proceeding this evening would be at major risk.
Did we address, did you address those issues, Counsel?
In my response to your letter, yes, I did.
We need to mark that into evidence.
This is a letter of June 28, 2016, from the law offices of Rosemary's Common Darty.
Can't hear you, Bill.
It's a letter of June 28, 2016, from the law offices of Rosemary's Common Darty. It is one, two pages of a letter, and there's one attachment, which appears to be from a tax map. So it's a three-page document. We're going to mark it as A1.
Have you had an opportunity to review that?
I've had an opportunity to review both letters. I've had an opportunity to look at the issues and.
Regarding the application being deficient, do you have an opinion on that?
My opinion is that notice is not deficient, that appropriate and acceptable notice was provided. I disagree with Givadon's counsel as to their position that the notice was deficient. I believe it's case law to support the fact that if notice is clear as to the property and clear as to what the applicant is intending to do, and it's not confusing to the general public, case laws indicate that notice is sufficient at that point. The fact that there's maybe an incorrect designation of a lot, as well as the commonly known address, is appropriate, and obviously, by turnout today, I think we can be sure that notice seems to have been adequate in this matter. So other than the issue that we're addressing with respect to whether or not the board should proceed as to the access to the easement, other than that, I really don't agree with any of Givadon's points with respect to the notice of deficiency in the application.
Okay. Would you like to, I'll give you, as they say, the final word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, I'll give.
Okay. Agreed.
You go, please.
I would just point out to counsel and to the board.
So you guys can please.
By the applicant's own site plan application indicating the 200-foot notice circle, it is measured from the northerlymost point of the property owned by Mr. Zaka, 2803, whereas the easement area under the access agreement runs from 2805 all the way to River Road. So the 200, when I argued that the easement area had not been surged or properly, 200 feet of the easement, the area that was omitted from any surge was the area from the northerlymost point of 2803 to River Road. 200 feet from that intersection crosses over River Road to properties on the opposite side. They were not noticed.
Counselor?
As indicated in Cox, there is no direct notice, and as counsel indicates, she doesn't have in her letter any case law to support. There is no block and lot designation for the easement area. The easement area was measured from the point of access for the property that benefits the easement. the easement and measured all the way out to the extreme width that's brought it into the circular inheritance drive. As your counsel indicated, he did not see any deficiency. He indicated that he believes that the notices are sufficient. And my last word on that would be, if that is the case, and your engineer did certify that the application is complete, whether it's in a technical advisory position or not, under the statute and under Cox, it is clear that the Board must move forward on the application. And you have 120 days to do so, or you jeopardize the application being de facto approved by your inaction.
Well, that's not necessarily true. The Board does have the opportunity and the right to deem the application incomplete tonight.
I disagree with you. That's not what Cox or case law says.
Is your case law on that?
No, there's not exact case law. But there is indication the Board has broad scope to request additional information from the applicant. It feels that information is necessary to make an informed decision on the application. So although that has not necessarily been defined by the Boards in this case, if this Board feels that they require additional information before they can go forward, and as I said, make an informed decision, then the Board has the right to request that information. And if the Board sees fit, again, the Board can say that without this information, they can't proceed. So it does fall under technically being deemed incomplete, not by the professionals, but by the Board.
So, Mr. Rush, what you're saying is, how do we feel about the 200-foot notice? Did they do it correctly?
My position is, Jividon has brought up some technical issues. And again, I don't think those issues have been vetted. Completely, as Jividon and counsel even indicated, that they were just brought into this matter two days ago. So you can't expect them to come forward with anything other than basically the surface issues with expected deficiencies. My feeling is that the notice was sufficient, that based upon the reading of the statute and the appropriate case law, that sufficient notice was given to this matter. So that's, again, that's my opinion. I could be incorrect, and if the Board follows, if the Board follows my recommendation that it was sufficient, this matter can be appealed, and then a judge may...
So now it's just a matter of whether we want to proceed, hear the applicant, or...
Again, you're asking me my opinion, my advice to this Board. My advice to this Board is that notice was sufficient. That doesn't mean that any of the Board members have to agree with my advice. I mean, you're entitled to read these letters as you see fit and hear the testimony as you see fit, and make that determination based upon all the information being presented here. But if you're asking me my opinion and my advice to the Board, notice is sufficient. And I think we get to, I think my counsel position is that go on to the next step, which is whether or not the Board wants to proceed with the understanding that the access to the property, to the easement, has not yet been determined.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Christopher Hanlon, again, for the record. The, you're wrestling with two issues here. I know you left the first one dealing with the easement to go to the notice issue. I'm going to try to address both simultaneously. First, just so the record's clear, the objectors are spending money. So... Sure they are. That has a bearing on the point that if this is a waste of time because the applicant doesn't have the right to use the land for the use bearings, then not only is the town wasting money, the applicant, the objectors are also, so the record's clear. We agree with Mr. McDonald's solution. This should be carried until it gets sorted out. But fairness to you, I don't think it's going to get sorted out in two weeks. However, if it gets carried, it gets sorted out. And if I were the applicant's attorney, in a heartbeat, in the face of an objection to my notice from the Givens Law Firm, I'd renotice. What's the big deal? Do it right. Get that taint out of the application. It makes all the sense in the world. So it should be carried for the reasons that Mr. McDonald articulated. And if that happens, you solve the second problem, because the applicant can renotice when you decide you're going to place this back on your agenda.
I like the one record saying, "My two weeks," which is the hypothetical.
Right. Well, and I just, I just didn't want to...
Could be a month, could be three weeks.
Right. I didn't want to ratify your two weeks. I thought I'd be disingenuous in doing that. But I think carrying it until it gets sorted out is absolutely the way to go. Thank you.
All right, which, oh, this looks like it's up to the Board. Do you have any thoughts on it?
I agree. I don't think this application has a likely standout without that access. I think it should be carried.
Listen, I, this application has gotten everybody in a frenzy. I just would like to make sure, I know some folks initially said we shouldn't carry it, now applauding that we might carry it. This application...
No, no, no!
Dad!
Well, first off, let me, let me say this. The applicant has the right to present his case. He has to, we have to, we're obligated to listen to all the facts, to all the testimony, and then the Board will decide and make a decision whether or not this project is a benefit to the community or a detriment to the community. We all live in the community. We all live in the community.
What benefit? What benefit? But it's not to us.
We haven't heard the application. We haven't heard the benefits, we haven't heard the detriments from the, we haven't heard the application yet. You have, you folks really have this, this applicant already, you know, tried and convicted and ready for the chair. I mean, he's got the right to present his case. I think you all need to hear the testimony. You all need to hear the testimony provided. Why don't we go ahead with the application so that you know exactly what's proposed and what's not proposed, and then you can decide whether you're in favor of it or against it. Right now, we have a dilemma. We have an attorney here representing Jividon who owns the road. Jividon is saying that they do not consent to this application, thus making it impossible for the applicant to use that property. Now, they will allow, according to what I've read, what they're saying is, "We gave you permission for three curb cuts and for three homes."
That's it.
All right? That's basically what I have in front of me. I don't have, now you've had discussions with them, and you've talked about it, and this issue may be resolved, you know, between you guys tomorrow, next week, the week after. But moving forward, that, that's a huge part of this. Moving forward and hearing all this without having access is like putting the cart in front of a horse.
She said never, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry? Excuse me, we can't, we cannot, we cannot, everybody has to be on the record. Right now, we're not on, it's not time for any public input. There will be time, I promise you. Everybody will have an opportunity to speak. So it's up to the Board to decide what you want to do. I, you know, it's, we have a little bit of a dilemma here.
It is not up to the Board to carry.
Not what can happen. Oh, exactly.
Well, we gotta, we gotta...
Speak into the microphone, please.
The issue, first of all, based upon what the Board's considering, the applicant can voluntarily agree to have it carried, and at that point, then the statutory time limits are told. If the applicant doesn't voluntarily agree to have it carried, the Board can unanimously determine that it's going to be carried, or then would have to, there'd have to be a motion, if the Board saw fit, that the application's deemed incomplete, and then there'd have to be a vote taken on, on the motion of the application being deemed incomplete.
And then the applicant would then have to start over? I mean, what would...
No, the applicant would then be deemed incomplete, would go back, and my feeling is it would go back to DRC.
Until that issue's resolved.
Until that issue's resolved.
I don't think the applicant's going to voluntarily make a request to carry this. Am I correct or incorrect?
Frankly, Mr. Chairman, I don't know. Okay? I'd obviously have to confer with my client before I make that legal decision for him.
How long do you think it's going to take to resolve, or maybe it'll never be resolved? But I mean, you say you're in discussions with Jividon.
No, I say we were.
You were.
Now we have Givens, who, in fairness to Nancy, didn't even know she was involved until, I think she said Thursday or Friday. We were dealing with Cincinnati. And the last conversation with Cincinnati was that they wanted to basically know what the Board or the town thought of it before they went forward. I mean, I can't divulge, and Nancy can refer, as an attorney, the discussions as far as all of the nuances that were discussed, but certainly they were noticed. We brought them in back in May last year. This was not a last-minute thing where the applicant said, "Hey, we're not even going to talk to Jividon, and we're just going to roll the dice and see where it goes."
Mr. Chairman, I'm at a complete disadvantage. My information...
Well, we all are. We just got the letter two days ago. You know, the applicant's at a disadvantage as well. We're all at a disadvantage. I'll, I'll give you that one.
I don't have anyone here from Jividon, unfortunately, who's informed to speak to these statements. They are essentially the recollection of a party. I believe that there's quite a bit more to the, a year and two months ago conversation. I don't believe it's the same application. I understand it was a much smaller warehouse a year plus ago, and I simply, you know, we're caught up short. We got no more notice than anyone else. In fact, we had less notice because we weren't, we were simply unaware until the mail came. In fact, Ms. Stone Dougherty's own letter dated May 12, 2015, addressed to Jividon in Cincinnati, and I will mark this as objector G2.
You say I think they already marked it as part of...
This is last year's letter.
Right, I added it attached to the letter. No?
Well, it indicates, it indicates a 10,000-square-foot industrial warehouse. And as I understand it, the application pending before this order right now is for double that.
But what is the issue here? Is the issue that it's 120-foot, and you just don't want industrial warehouse? Is that a different...
I am told we do not want industrial. To the extent that the representation is that Jividon was involved in this conversation, I'm trying to, I'm trying to refute that.
And I, and since I'm the one who had the conversation and feel somewhat as an attorney and officer of the Court in my integrity, I can certainly say, yes, we sent initial letter. We also sent plans to Jividon. So they had the full set of plans that showed the main difference between the initial letter and the change in plan was the square footage did go up, and they made plans that showed that. But the big difference between that application and the one that's here tonight, as you, the, your engineer and planner are aware well, is really the only main difference is we turned the building. You know?
So the original plan that you gave to Jividon was okay?
It had, no, yeah, I don't want to, no, no. I'm not saying it was okay. I never said that. Because what I said is, we had initial discussions with Jividon. We sent them plans showing the 20,000-square-foot building. Those would be in their plan sets that they have. Those plans were reviewed in a very preliminary review. We had three discussions of different things that Jividon had concerns about. And those concerns ultimately were, if the Board approves this, then come back to us.
Well, that's, you know, that's, that's...
I'm just telling you how it ended. Because Jividon's position was...
Jividon's bailing out. They want us to make a decision for them. I mean, come on! This is not public. There are a lot of people, this is a...
In fairness, Jividon, when I was speaking to them, their corporate counsel is, is, I don't want to miss out on your last name, Latenville.
Latenville, Onburks.
As she indicated, they're in Cincinnati, Ohio. They're not here in New Jersey. You know, they're not right here on site, their corporate counsel, and they never said, "We give consent." I never said that. I want to make it to be clear. They, we were in discussions with them. We thought those discussions were going well. The way I understood those discussions was they gave us an outline of some things that were concerns of theirs, and they said, "Once and if, a big if, you even get the town's approval, then we'll continue this conversation." It was nothing...
A year, another, a year plus went by before the notice arrived between those discussions and today's date. And that really does take us by surprise. And we're, and I was given a very clear directive, which I imparted to the Board at the beginning of my presentation.
So last year, when you had the other letter, 10,000 square feet?
Yes.
What was Jividon's position at that point in time?
There was, there were discussions, as there are in any real estate matter, there are discussions. Parties have opinions at one point, that if discussions continue, may evolve, but I'm...
Sounds like you're looking for monetary...
I don't believe the discussions, no, we are not. We are absolutely not. That is absolutely untrue. There, there was no agreement, there was no discussion, there was, there was...
When they had these discussions last year, when they, like you said, they would never approve it, when they going down that path, were they considering, now that they've increased the size, that they say that's the point where there's no...
I do not, I don't know the answer to Jividon's question. Well, my actual...
All right, excuse me, can you state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Camille Otero. I'm also an attorney at Givens PC, and I'm counsel for Jividon. I've been counsel for Jividon since 2003. I do their environmental work. I am not, I am not a real estate attorney. I do not do land use or zoning work, okay? But I did have a conversation with Rosemary Dougherty today regarding the May 2015 letter, and I did, you know, attempt to have this discussion with my client, Jane Garfinkel, whom she's referenced today. And I want it clear on this record now, Jividon most certainly is not looking for any money or any pay for any of this kind of activity. Whatever was supposed to be placed in 2015, under those circumstances, whatever those circumstances were, Jividon may have considered, perhaps, I don't know, agreeing to a 10,000-foot warehouse on the property. I am not certain about that. Today, as we stand here in 2016, Jividon has no intention of amending its access agreement. They have had discussions with them since Thursday, when I received an email at 9:40 PM at night, that was the first time my firm became aware of it. As Ms. Latenville said, we were not retained until Friday. She immediately went to the town hall and tried to Oprah and pull relevant files so that we could, in fact, get our firm up to speed. But at no point in time since learning of this, did Jividon ever say they would amend the access agreement. They have no intention of doing so, not today, not tomorrow, not in the future.
Jividon would prefer to see three homes there, even given the fact of the complaints for the last four years regarding noise and odors, they think it's, would be, they'd prefer to have residential.
Yes, yes, yes. Jividon has no, Jividon has no preference when, the property is owned residential.
That's correct.
Jividon permitted, all right, an access easement to this landowner, Mr. Zeca.
Zeca.
Zeca, Mr. Zeca, I apologize, Mr. Zeca, for the sole purpose, so that they would have ingress and egress to three residential homes. That was the intended purpose of this access easement, for no other purpose.
Okay, well, that's pretty clear to me.
This is clear to us.
I'm learning. I'm not going to waste everybody's time if, I'm sorry, if anyone's...
My name is Camille Otero, O-T-E-R-O.
All right. From what Camille Otero is saying, that it's never going to happen. So you need to resolve that. Never is a long time. And to sit here through planning and testimony and, you know, half of the town, I mean, we're a caring community, we're all neighbors, I understand it's a volatile issue, you know, I just think every T needs to be crossed, every I has to be dotted, so that the applicant can make his case and be judged fairly on the testimony, so that everybody here understands what is proposed and what's not proposed. As I said, there's been a lot of stuff out there that, quite frankly, reading a couple of things on the internet and some websites, if everything on that website were true, my name would be on that petition, if everything there was true. A lot of it's not true, and we need to, you know, we need to get into that. But the first thing we need to do is... But the first thing we need to do is determine whether or not we can actually move forward with this, based upon testimony from Givodon's counsel. They're never going to give you the access. Where are we going? I mean, I, listen, I, tell me.
Again, our legal position is the application was certified and deemed complete. It was indicated that any approval, it would be a condition too. Never is a strong word. Counsel's making representations based on limited facts that her client has for their own representations for information that her own firm has only had since Friday. As we indicated in the beginning, if the planning testimony proceeded so that the members here and counsel for Givodon could hear firsthand of what is proposed, who knows what that never may or may not be? And maybe if their position is, it's never, and I'm glad you're not a judge in Superior Court, maybe the issue is it has to be litigation. There's other issues here besides just the access agreement. This is a landlocked parcel, which Givodon is aware of. There's a history on how the property actually came to be. This is the only residential lot on this entire part of the road, which is completely surrounded by industrial.
I understand that, but when you say it's landlocked, I, I'm just thinking if a judge, and I'm not a judge, I don't know, I'm just trying to, I'm playing the devil's advocate because I want to do this right. You know, I want to make sure everything's on the record and fully transparent with everything we do. If the judge should, for some crazy reason, you know, decide that, well, you're not really landlocked because you have access for three lots, where do we go? Then it's a waste of time. I really think that issue needs to be clarified and clear. And I think that should have been done well in advance of this meeting. Quite frankly, I'm, I'm surprised that this issue even came up, that we've gotten this far without it. And I'm not inclined, and I'm only one vote, but I'm not inclined to condition an application of this magnitude, you know, upon, you know, things that may happen or may not happen. I want everything clear, crystal clear. So, when we make a decision, we're making an educated decision, that we give the applicant a fair hearing and that we give the objectors a chance to, to make their case and we make a decision whether or not the, the project should go forward or not. I just think it's that type of application. We don't get applications like this a lot, but I do want to make sure every T is crossed, every I is dotted, and I think clearly, based upon the testimony I'm hearing tonight or the statements made by counsel, yeah, by the state, I clarified it, I said by the statements, you'll probably end up testifying at some point. No. No, based upon the statements represented by Givodon's attorney, there's no access.
Well, just to circle back, then to answer...
Please, please. Yes. Thank you.
You asked whether or not my client would consent and I advised you I would need to be able to say to my client. So, then I would ask for a 10-minute recess so I can speak to my client, discuss with him the options, to see whether or not we would consent to be carried, which was the option the chairman initially asked, or whether or not we would not consent.
Okay. I will grant that. We'll take a 10-minute recess back here at the quarter after eight.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I had the opportunity to speak to my client in some brief detail, if I may. And at this point in time, my client, to answer the Mr. Chairman's question, would be willing to agree to consent to an extension of time to try to further discussions with Givodon, to see if some resolution of the issue, whether it's yea, nay, or whatever it is, can be resolved. However, and report back to the board with those findings, however, the applicant is reserving its rights in agreeing to this consent, that if there is still no change in position of whatever Givodon's never position is now, that we may compel the board to then finally vote and make a decision, win, win, or others, so we decide if litigation would be the ultimate avenue.
So, do we need a motion to carry this?
Yeah. Well, okay. Let me ask you a question on the, just so we clear up a, a little more of the muddy waters. On the notice situation, I mean, are we all comfortable that that's okay or should, I mean, I...
Well, I mean, not, not to take the wind out of Mr. Hanlon's sails, but certainly any good applicant attorney would renotice.
Okay. I think it's the right thing to do, so we eliminate that issue and we, we, you know, wait until you get the issue with Givodon resolved, if it ever gets resolved. And again, you can reserve the right to come back.
And it's, it's just so we're clear. What counsel said is they are reserving their right. If they can't work that with Givodon, they're still going to ask the board then to hear this application, knowing that they couldn't resolve the issue.
Then we're right back to where we started.
Correct. Exactly.
But she's saying they're reserving that right for the fact that they, they may want to take the matter as to access to the road, into litigation and let a court decide. Again, this is something that...
Which would have to be resolved before it comes back to us.
This is something that the board can address, I think, at that time. But I think for, for tonight's proceeding, the idea that we're going to at least begin the conversation and try to get more information with respect to the access, it may resolve the issue.
I think before we waste any more time on this issue, Rosemary said you were going to renotice and work something, or try and work something out with Givodon. I'd like to carry it until it's deemed complete.
Just so we're clear.
Well, it's clearly, technically, it's deemed complete, but we just want to carry it until we can get some resolution to the, possible resolution to the Givodon situation. When would, how, and how much time to the clock? We have an extension of time then.
You have an extension.
So, last...
It's no longer checking with the board, it's statutory.
All right. And then what we'll do is, you know, if that issue's resolved, we will certainly try to get on, on the agenda as quickly as possible.
Well, if I, if I may, counsel, I would want them to have this on some target agenda so that we can effectuate the renotice. And we certainly have a timeframe we're working with as far as when we may come back to the board and say, look, it cannot be resolved, or make your decision so we can decide if we're going to go to litigation route.
In German.
So, I'm not looking to have this just carried. And definitely, I would be looking for a date, whether or not the board secretary has your calendar available.
Counselor, how much time do you think you're going to...
Well, to renotice, I mean, it's 10 days.
Not for that, just renoting the question.
I mean, listen, they, you heard counsel make a lot of representations of never, never, never. I, I'm, I'm not going to say this is an issue that's going to be resolved in a day, two days, three days, or a week. I would think out of fairness, with board member schedules and holidays and vacations, I would be looking to have this carried to like an August, September date, so we're still within the 100.